Okay, have a moment of prayer if you don't mind. Father God, we thank you for today and we thank you for keeping us safe for as we go on to the next couple of days. Yes, it should be with our firefighters, our city workers, Father God, those that are going to be out in the elements. So we just ask for protection and safety and we just thank you for all that you do and each need that you meet. Leave that or I guess no, this evening, thank you in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, and the freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
Chrissy McNeil, Paul Baker. You men, thank you. Public appearance, is there anybody at this time that has anything that you want to add to all have to save our agenda for this evening? Okay, we go ahead and do our swearing in of the elected officials. This one.
Stand if you would.
Um, have them stand if you would. Um, we've got Mr. Mepha, Mepha Nambie, Chrissy McNeil, and John Oliver. If you guys would stand please.
Swear your hand. So I'll just read the oath and then ask a question. So I did solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city and help support you in charge of it, as well as the constitutional laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America. If you do so, swear or affirm, please say I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Oliver. And Mr. McNeil, Chrissy McNeil, thank you guys for coming back and for another time. Approval of a minute, item number seven, can I get a motion to approve the December fourth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
I make the motion to approve the minute. December four.
Chrissy, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
James, Paul Baker. You men, thank you. Next up is department reports. Are you prepared to deliver your?
Yes. Aye.
So a quick, uh, Phil Paul's for service in Nelson for the month of December was twenty-four. Uh, we had thirteen traffic stops. Within those traffic stops, we made one arrest for drugs, of these were marijuana. And then we had a DUI arrest. And then we also had a little incident with hit and run early in the morning. That's essentially what happened. Yeah, I had a car swerve over in a lane and then they actually proceeded to chase one another inside of the city limits. I urge everyone to, if you guys do find yourself in that situation, try and take a picture of the plate and not chase the other car. It could have ended very badly, but no one got hurt. Uh, and that person was arrested, fortunately, the half-full hit and run with a fifteen-year-old. So there's that. Uh, there's one suspicious person call. I believe that was in the park as well. One of the main things we've been focusing on have been the earth's concrete development with their plant. With them aiding in the construction of the train center in Atlanta, they've been receiving threats. They were victim to domestic terrorism with this group who claims to love the trees and all that good stuff. So we've just been doing some patrols over there, making sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing. No people coming up to this surveillance area like that. And the police is right off there, off the old Nelson Road. Lastly, getting a few more speed complaints on Old Nelson Road in Yellow Creek. It's not on the list, but also, previous mountain, the complaints have been slowly dwindling down, which is good. If you've been out there a little bit more often, show more presence on the people. Uh, so that's bringing everything down. We're going to continue to monitor all the roads and the concrete facility though. Any questions?
Um, I know that we've had some complaints about the speed bumps out there. They're short around. We've had some complaints. We've got a couple of people coming in complaining about those. Do you believe that those speed bumps are determined?
I do. I do. So I drive through there pretty frequently and, uh, the people that obviously decide to drive through there pretty quickly will mess up their cars. Those are probably the ones complaining a little bit about speed bumps. But to what I see, uh, it has slowed down the traffic down there. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
What did we hear about the permanent ones?
Wait, did you hear about the, um, hip hop? And after you talked about it, the conductors have been decided to let us into drug-free country. To determine to do that, just because of all the current. And since that's a credit where it's due, it's about us. And he, he guys would be working with hip hop to the present. We'll try to push on that a little bit, try to get something concrete. And then the holidays comes, so we everybody down, everything down. Next up is our mayor's report. Thank you, thank you, everybody that's come out and supported us for our Christmas event. I believe this is the largest home we've had. We had over fifty kids and we had a lot of help this year. So we, um, Home Depot, Holly Springs, Kent and Jasper donated toys for the kids to build. And we, we bought some little crafts for them to make, which is like from Michael's or whatever, but they had lots doing it. We also had donations from Marietta Corey, six hundred dollars donated for food. So, um, and they are very eager to help us with our Easter event that's coming up. And it was in the park. Blue Ridge Marvel and Granite donated five hundred dollars for gift cards for the kids. So we had, we passed out, um, not only did we have little bags of candy and stuff, but we did, we had enough funds to buy color brands and coloring books for the, for the babies. And put some candy in there, which is a gift card. So everybody left very happy. Um, I wanted to give a shout out to Chrissy McNeil and to Matt for playing else this year. As everyone felt, thank you. The kids loved it, especially Matt being buddy of the elf. That was like a, that was a good treat for them. They really enjoyed that. These guys actually came in and helped with building toys and stuff. So a lot of good feedback even after it was over. We got, um, I got some texts and some calls that just says, hey, this is awesome. Awesome. So, um, thank you guys for, uh, everybody who helped and participated in that. Next up, I just want to touch base. I know that, um, I want to get a head start on this. I'm not running around. I'm not going to shake my head and cut off or get for our Easter event. I will be, um, I'll be seeking donations to offset any, any spending that we have for there and also be recruiting helpers. So we need a money grab. Anybody want to play them? How long have they been? Is your dirt? Um, Matt did a, Matt did it for us last year and I think that, I don't think that that money fits, too, it's going to fit in. Maybe Jane.
I can do it. It's gonna be highly entertaining. Not a long one to get back.
So, um, See, also movies in the park. I wanted to take and mention that. We're going to get that started back, um, May, June, September. Everybody good with those dates? Guys, uh, July is so hot. So, and it's just, I mean, it, and August is even worse. But September, a nice, you know, middle of the month when everybody's going back to school, it's a little cool. I think they would really enjoy that. So do a back to school thing for them and maybe try to get some donations for, um, some school supplies from some of our, for some of our folks that are happy to help there. Um, let's see, there's one other thing I want to mention. I know, I remember right after I get finished with this, so the Easter event, Christmas event, movies in the park. Like I said, um, December was crazy. We had my own family have a flu at that time. So we had Jamie and Harrison in the hospital and so. Everybody else was busy. But we'll move on and, um, let Miranda do her finance report for us.
All right, let's go over bank balances first. All right. Let's start with, I don't know, what's under the grand plan, eight. General fund, one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. SPOSS four, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. SPOSS two, that's the old Higgins, four thousand and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents. This one is, um, a low balance and we are closing this out. I would like to, have you, we, do we have a status on, um, our projects? Are we coming down to?
We've got the ironness. Well, we've got this one over here that we need to bring back up. So, um, in front of the park, now that we know where the pins are at. Uh, is anybody had an opportunity to go look at the, where the pins were at yet? Have you, any comments?
Back end line was over the line. Owned by the platinum, not with the pin, most. Get independent. France pretty much ran the line, so we got a lot of room there for it, by the way. Size of the whole, we got a little bit. This one, back in the middle range, about a foot on the far side. And then get the other part.
Do you know how far the back line was off? I didn't look at the back, back pin at the very end.
It's just about a foot.
About a foot?
On the far side.
Okay.
The line. The back line here facing the drainage. So.
Yeah, um, I spoke with Devin and he had mentioned that they made one, they were going to clear out some of that too. So I'll look in there, but it's a foot because it would be on this property, right?
About a foot over.
Okay. Probably that.
Flashing pen being that powerful, it's not.
Okay. I'm glad. I'll let him know. I don't think that was wrong with it. Cause they're not planning on doing anything to that property. But if we do the, that song, this is the, is that true? This is Higgins?
That'd be it.
Yes, Higgins.
Close house.
Yeah, close that out.
Uh, great. So then I'm going to get with you, because we need to do our end. Um, okay, SPOSS five, eight hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Cash reserve fund, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Higgins SPOSS twenty, four million, seven thousand, eight hundred and eight, thirty-seven dollars. Um, the Cures Act relief fund, two hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. All right, that's bank balances, which is about where we're at right now as far as we, we've made it halfway through the year. So this, as of December the first of twenty twenty-three, our revenues are at remaining twenty-five percent. We should be at fifty percent or less. Overall expenditure should be fifty percent, um, for the work and we're at sixty-nine percent. My son just read it off that. Um, one of the things that I'd like to see if we can factor that in there, because we are starting the new year and we are fast to get our first week into the year, is can we get on our radar, go ahead and capital planning, just some planning sessions, um, for the CIP?
Absolutely.
Um, planning sessions in general, um.
You want a schedule on Friday this month or do you want one for the first year?
I'm thinking maybe let's do like, I would say maybe like middle, middle of February. Let's get a little bit of time. Let's discuss A, tasks upon projects. Let's get together all of the products that we've got going on. Um, bring all that to the table where we're at with our current CIP, um, all the active stuff. Bring all the things that we would like to see, um, in past. What's something we haven't been doing? What we want to see?
Why don't we try to have an off-line on that? I'll try to get, um, I'll try to get a project plan together, um, that overall project plan for everything that we completed in twenty twenty-three while we've got, um, scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
That's what I would do too.
Yeah.
Try to bring all of that together.
And then have the council touch base on that. We'll get. It'll make pull-ins or push-outs.
Maybe going forward as far as the budget process a little bit easier as well. Um, and if we, if we go ahead and start thinking about it now, I think it might be a process.
Yeah.
There, um, same goes for, um, we're circling back around to let's start planning and thinking about middle rates and all of that jazz.
Yeah, I'm supposed to have another meeting either this month with the county. That's beginning. That kind of stuff. So I'm gonna say I'll, I'll keep you guys posted on that. If anybody wants to sit in, I think the meeting will wear a jester because it's gonna come. Oh, yes. I got them on there. Michael, K, Bayes line, um, and then I'll. I can do that. Class that box. So mid-February for, for our work session?
Yeah. We can't wait.
We made this on our.
We could do it then if you want to do like that work session.
Oh, wait, we have training. That's why, that's why. I think this is our job to, yeah.
Well, you can do it at the end of this month if anyone's need to change.
Absolutely. Well, they have training too. That's why I got training at the end of the month. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it the end of, um, let's, can we do one, can we do a training session the week after February the twelfth? Like on Tuesday or Thursday or you guys give that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get it down.
I think a lot of.
Working down on Thursday.
So the twelfth is here. We could either do it on the fifteenth or the twenty-second. Uh, that's a Thursday. Thursday seems to work better for a good movie.
Fifteen to twenty-second. What looks better?
Uh, twenty-second.
All right, let's go get a plan about, yeah.
Yeah. Smart man.
It was actually actually better twenty-second.
And I, I'm gonna go ahead and do the report for the SPOSS. We have burned the end of the February. So I'm gonna go ahead and hold all of the products that I have been completing. So I'll have all that information ready. That, so.
What are you planning on them?
And I'm gonna get that ready. Hopefully that'll next week, tomorrow, next week.
Can you, um, can you forward me a copy of it? Any questions? We've got our finances. Mr. Oliver. James.
Should we get to meet with the lady, the designer for the heart panel for the questions we have?
I have no order. I have no, please. You don't have order? Or you're, you're talking about the lady? Yes, I did meet with her. You're talking about the, um, Southeast, yeah, Carrie. Okay, I did meet with her and I don't, I'm gonna look with me, but I can forge you our notes. We went back and forth on email and then we actually had a phone conversation. And she said, we're actually not, uh, we are ADA compliant. Um, she said, if you wanted to slope that one side, you could. That would not be an issue. And I don't remember what the other questions were. I do have it written there.
Just a loose swing post.
Yes, and they're gonna come, I tell you, right at the first of the year's fine, they are gonna come back and tell you that. We did talk about the drainage issue and, and some of that. And everything, but I believe that's fixed. So.
Yeah. A lot better than they have.
Yeah, so I will, I will follow.
I think. I don't know if you talked to her or whatever, again, the table being inside the player, I don't think there's supposed to be anything inside that.
We moved it, um, we moved it when they mowed, but I can ask for help. The tables being there, it was so much is the reason that they got moved. Cause you, you couldn't put a.
I still, whatever you're looking at, I just don't think there's supposed to be anything inside the player. I don't remember.
I'll, I'll make sure and we'll, we'll.
I'll make sure. That's what she said. Yeah, we're supposed to be outside.
So Carrie, I'll have Matt move the, um, tables. And then I'll, I'll, I got, I'm gonna come to, to fix the loose man. And I think that was it. It was just the ADA compliance. It was just three. Okay. And the tables, I was asking Matt to move. So, our audit is, um, was supposed to happen, remember? It was supposed to be, we got emails. We, uh, Kelsey was emailing. I even sent Stacy Jo an email, which I don't know that she responded to me at all. So, um, we are obviously not on top of their list, the best I can figure out for, um, broad purposes. So we have to follow the extension. Um, I believe it's already been done. So they did, or so we're compliant. So, but they're coming Wednesday and they'll do our audit. So we have everything ready for them. We had it ready for them for, since October. Yeah, and so anyway, the, the issue, part of the issue is, is the lady that does our audit has moved to, um, Maryland with her husband. And she, yeah, it's a whole thing. So she had to fly back in to do it. So we're, we're actually looking at some other options as well to put before your report. For possible, you know, maybe different, maybe switch it up a little bit. See if we can find somebody local that, you know, will make this a priority. Cause we've been late the last three times. Twenty twenty, it was okay that we were late because everybody was late due to COVID. And then we were late again in twenty twenty-one. I think they extended it. So. I think this is the first, or second extension because they were.
I'm not the one who got lost, though.
They are, but they say, right, I think does the government stuff and she married a guy that was, I think he's Navy maybe, and he's stationed in DC. So. I live up there, but we already, like, we've emailed him all the minutes, emailed him all the statements. And email a bunch of stuff. I know they're a good way through it, but the stuff that they need that's physically here, she's gonna come the seventeenth to try to come. And normally she's here for a few hours. We let them just have access and do what they need to do. So. Miranda and Kelsey was in a class as it lasts this past month in December. Did you guys need someone to, that, that did all this moving for Jasper now?
We got a topic class that was doing Higgins counting. So he gave me his card and then I let a guy come in. That week that, um, he's playing to the Edson family and gave the cables, that he has ties to the city and he's very interested in the employee that we're interested in here. So I have his context up in the window.
Like, um, what I'd like to do is I'd like to plan when we have our work session, maybe in February, um, have something for you guys then to take a look at. And if you would like for me to invite them to speak, I would be happy to do that. Cause that's a big, I mean, that's a big thing for us. Um, these August, cause it's, like I said, we puts us on the line with the state. I think we paid about sixteen thousand every year.
And sixteen.
That's usually about R and Ps. Yeah, and I mean, sixteen thousand dollars, I, I don't, if you're gonna pay somebody that kind of thing, I don't expect that to fall in extension. And here we've been on time. This is the third year. So not kidding. All right, so let me make a note here. Doesn't mean we have to change, but it's always good to have options in front of us and hear what somebody else has to say, play and offer. All right, next up is unfinished business. I don't know if everybody, I don't know if I think everybody here knows, um, maybe John, I don't know, I think you were on the, you know, chain, but what happened is, is we had an issue with the floor. We were having our new floors put down. Um, we had an issue in the background there where we had some disintegration, board disintegration. Basically, it was unsafe. Um, we did take a look down and took a look at it. Um, I called Brinstone and just for disclosure purposes. I don't vote, so I did call my son because I needed somebody that would come right in, go deep, hold one or four. Um.
Couldn't get anybody to come look.
The other people that normally come a couple of weeks off. So we did, we did try to find somebody before that and then I, and I just called and asked, I got a call over and then I said, hey, I need some help. He came down. This area back here, there was, uh, what would you say the size of that was?
Ten by six, probably.
Yeah.
With there about six foot of end was gone. So forth, everything holding up. As far as the deck and gills and all that, pretty good shape. Good job.
So it came on into this hall, um, and they had to replace half a hall. The half next to the bathroom, the bathroom, that's the flooring in there's tiled. It started to sag because we were putting the bathroom in, just decided to cut that door shut too. And run the pipe right in the middle. But so there was nothing holding it up. So anyway, they, they, I believe that Craig Ward's sister, and I'm not a contractor, but sistered in, um, the two by sixes and, and stabilized everything. What they did say is, is from looking that it would not be a bad idea to have somebody like Arrow, pest control come out that can do a study underneath to find out if we have issues in other places. And based on what they cut out to this wall here to clean the kitchen, it, the, the damage goes into the kitchen and the damage goes into the bathroom. So they know that. But in order to, to clean up what we have for right now and to get us back in working order, they fixed everything that we asked them to. Um, they also put in our doors. Our doors blew open, but that wasn't the only thing. We had cracks that was an inch thick. I was in there that just wind came in and, and rain came in, which was part of the rock problem. I think William came down and looked. You could probably explain a lot a little bit better than I can with the deck and, set if you would.
Deck's basically not too high. There's not enough insulation there to seal it out. I think my leading in the forces and problems with the decks. It was like there's some old turnout down the street and see if they look like it's active. It's been going on a while.
So they put a new two by six across there, um, and they sealed it as best they could, um, in the future, depending on how much we want to get into that. Um, it would be to rip that off and drop that deck down or rip the boards off, cut everything down and then redeck the top of it. So, um, they didn't use the, um, material that we had and then they had to add a little bit of material that they needed for when they found what issues over here. So the total cost for the repairs for that was, um,
That included the doors.
That included doors. The doors, Home Depot wanted, but originally that I sent out to everybody, Home Depot wanted twenty-three hundred dollars for the door. We decided to wait and Chase just shopped it around and found them somewhere below, uh, like a, I think, half a five here. He found the exact doors for us. Yeah, so he was, he got that. We just had to wait on, and we did. He felt. Nine hundred seventy-five. So they made twenty-three hundred from Home Depot. Watkins is where he ended up getting that, was it? Anyway, anyway, the total, the total cost on everything was, um, that down, so. A thousand nine hundred seventy-three eighty-five. So, um, what I'd like to do tonight is get, uh, go ahead and get the, uh, make it, get a motion for, um, approval of this, this dollar amount for this emergency work. Put the rest on our actions.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, James, can I get a second? Chrissy, Paul Baker.
It's a couple thousand over there. What you, I just.
It, it was, but it's because he had to do this floor here in the hall. When they cut it back and we came down and looked at that as well, um, the only thing that they charged us was just for the labor and the, and the material for that. Paul Baker. New business, yearly appointments. We can check them all. So we've got, so this was the twenty twenty-three, we've got twenty twenty-four. Yeah. Hi, so appointments, mayor pro temp for twenty twenty-four. Ones from last year are all political. So we had James Plank as mayor pro temp. James did a great job last year. And, um.
I think he did a great job this year.
So nomination by William Taylor, do you accept, Mr. Queen? You accept?
Yeah.
You scared me.
Okay, um, municipal judges, Mr. Daryl Caldwell. Um. City attorney, Jeff Russbridge. City solicitor, Jeff Russbridge. City building inspector, um. Veer, Veer Veritas. Um, finance manager, Ms. Miranda McDowell. City clerk, Kelsey Reel. Check signers are Sylvia Green, James Queen, Luke Taylor, Mr. Nathan Hampton, um, Chrissy McNeil and Kelsey Reel. Okay, John, would you be willing to be a check signer? Addie, John, I'll vote. So. Okay, for this one here, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, approve.
Okay, so James, can I get a second?
Second.
Adam Taylor, on favor. You now.
Madam, uh, Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, in the past, the zoning administrator has been appointed position for various reasons. Specifically, things in the ordinance that are called upon the zoning administrator by position. That makes it where the mayor doesn't necessarily have to be the zoning administrator, but can be. But it's, uh, it's a position that should be appointed each year.
Okay, um, we will, um, cause I'm not up here to do that this evening, but we can talk about it at our, at our next, um, at our work session. And the council wants to bring some of it. Call that with zoning and we can, we'll touch base on it, but thank you for bringing that up. Pickens County government calendar, um, we opted to go with this one here. Um, and just follow the Pickens County, uh, calendar.
That's what we closed on last year and I know there's been a couple days of difference this year. There's a little more difference there about it, like your team, the New Year's Eve. I just wanted to make sure everything is still okay there before I set it out as an official schedule.
Um, so, June tenth, something, about here, so. Is the, is June, is the bank's closing in October?
Everything's closed.
Is this my customer website?
Yeah.
I pulled it a little while ago. I didn't hear.
Yes.
Fourteen, fifteen days, yeah. That's why I put it up here to check. Well, I think the June tenth goes after their out for school. Or out for the summer.
Let's just look at these. So Monday, January the first is New Year's Day. And that's the, the one that we have from last year's behind it. So you can compare to what we have.
They are, they are closed, I mean.
Yeah.
They are.
So last year, we were eleven days, so we can look at the ones that we want to do or we can opt just hit do Pickens County government calendar.
What we invented last year was to do Pickens County, call Pickens County special. But because there were a couple of additional ones, I just wanted to make sure everybody felt the same way.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to get employees that have kids in those schools or things. A little easier, so I didn't want to assume the house. So I think they added the day after Christmas.
Yeah, the day after, yeah, and June tenth.
And then New Year's Eve, whereas we didn't have the New Year's Eve. Which I think they're going to take this year in the winter day.
So like March the twenty-ninth state holiday, do we wanna?
We have that anyway, but it was Good Friday.
Okay. So Good Friday, um, Memorial Day is given. June tenth was on there, Independence Day, July fourth was on there. September the second's Labor Day, fourteenth of October is Columbus Day, Veterans Day is November the eleventh. Thanksgiving Day November the twenty-eighth. State Holiday November the twenty-ninth, which is the day after Thanksgiving.
We did that last year.
And then December is the twenty-fourth is a state holiday, which is Christmas Eve. And then Christmas Day is the, is, um, a holiday.
They added the day after Christmas. This time and they did it years.
So for the twenty-sixth and New Year's Eve. So, um, do you guys want to follow that schedule or do you want to, um, or do you want to? Pick which ones of these you want?
Pretty happy with what we had last year. June tenth, Columbus Day.
There's, Jim, there's a lot of extras on this one.
Was June tenth on?
No.
This time?
Yeah, but like last year we approved all the Pickens county. With this on, there's a lot of additional things.
I was, I worked at the school, I get, I get the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth of December, thirty-first of December, January first. Uh, MLK. Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day. We don't get Columbus Day. We don't get Berry Day. We get one day for Thanksgiving, another Thursday. But, I mean, that's how it's always been there and it's just comparing the government. On the twelve month, we, we're, some of the schools, the boys are, uh.
Well, what's missing on here? It will do your stage as well, that's on the second. They have the day after Christmas, New Year's. And June tenth. So you, do you want to observe June, June tenth or y'all just want to leave it like it is?
What did we have before?
It's in the back, it's the next one. So New Year's Day, which was, um, the second, Martin Luther King Day, January sixteenth, Good Friday.
Which this year will be in March, it's March twenty-ninth first.
Yeah, I saw one also.
You got Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, State Holiday for the twenty-fourth, which is Thanksgiving. And then Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So you get two days for Thanksgiving, two days for Christmas. Comments, like, this is, he's having to go to where, is Chrissy, you post?
Yeah, I like, I like this one.
Don't know this.
Just because of all this, I'm sure. I mean, we can pick and choose in here, but I'm not. June, June.
How about you, James?
What is that?
Um, it's just, uh.
I Googled it, I can't remember. It was, nah, that's, that's like this time of year, they just add. It feels like Independence.
It was the, it was the day that, uh, the indentured servants, so they said the, the slaves in Texas realized that the war was over and that they were free.
Okay.
It's like a celebration for your land slaves.
Yeah. With, do you want to keep the holidays that we observed last year or do you want to add the holidays for the county?
The people that had last year, there's some less than four.
Okay, and William, I want you to say the same thing. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the city observed holiday schedule? Um, and follow the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-three for twenty twenty-four?
I don't notice it.
Number ten?
Second.
Will you tell us? On favor? Yes, okay. And then salting and plowing. Hold on, sorry, stacked that one. Let's go ahead and I would, we need to, um, we need to go ahead and, um, vote to approve the qualifying fees. Right now, um, in the past, we, our qualifying fees were twenty-five dollars for mayor councilmen. Are we good with that?
Good.
Okay, so, and then the other is our, um, calendar for our council meetings. Who's everybody gives a that. So we've got Monday, January eighth, which is today, February the twelfth. Um, the date was changed on this one due to training, Kelsey and Brandon will be out, uh, uh, down. Ma, Monday, March the fourth, April the first. I do want everybody here to call April twelfth and that day. And then Monday, May the sixth, Monday, June the third, Monday, July the first, Monday, August the fifth. Monday, September the ninth, Monday, October the seventh, Monday, November the eighteenth and Monday, December the second. We all good with those dates?
Eighteenth, I heard it was two days that pop in. You have the election, I believe is the fifth, which it would have been the fourth and then everything is cleared out, you know, like, we're making a call on Monday. So that's why I tried to, you know, like, maybe Thursday or something, so I pushed it earlier, but then you have another, like, we've turned it up to that about a second. So then I'm just not sure about really, more sure than anything else.
You guys good with the checks? So can I get a motion to approve our Nelson city council meeting dates and our, um. Our qualifying fees for twenty-five dollars for mayor council?
I don't think we do it on November, November. What was that?
That's Labor Day. Where's that? Not yet, extension's been.
Maybe, oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
That's why I didn't know if you want to do it like on a Thursday or something, just cause you have another one kind of right, calling it on December second.
Yeah, that's if, you know, decide when we close, you can.
Yeah, that's right. We can always move it, we need to, but are you guys good with those, those twenty-five dollar qualifying fees in our schedule? Okay, so go ahead and get a motion to approve our qualifying fees. Chris, you did it, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay. On favor? Yes, thank you. Alright, now our salting and plowing. Okay, so, most of you guys know, um. Most of you guys know, um. Chad Jenkins, Chad, um, is gracious for helping us out every year when we have events and stuff with generators and things of that. Um, he's also done some work for the city as far as, I think he did all of our sidewalks and stuff, um, for the front of the building. Uh, he came in, he has bought a, um, supply of equipment. He sent an email, but he also followed up with some conversation. Um, and he basically says, um, our twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-two forty-four salt and pine contract, when you get them on, please review the attached and let me know what's in here for you guys to review. Um, and if we have any questions, then I can email it back and call him. But, um, if we're interested in, um, the pre-buy option, which he highly recommends, because basically, um, and he did it for us. We have approximately a hundred thousand square feet of ruin service that comes out to approximately twelve thousand pounds, six tons of salt. If you pre-buy, it's cheaper than, um, than the bulk bag price that Humpy Co, um, puts out for that price. And he's bulk buying not only for us, but for Ball Ground. He's doing it for, is he doing it for Pickens too? Um, I don't think so.
Cherokee?
Maybe longer. Okay, so well, ladies, well, let's get the Hall Ground in. It's, it's too.
It was South City, but I think it's.
Um, so the con, his contract, if we want to use him, um, to put out the salt and stuff, which we don't have, um, we don't have the equipment to do that. Laurel Lakes has some areas, Nelson Road has some areas, where's some more?
Woodridge Avenue.
Woodridge Avenue, Cherokee Avenue. Those are the ones that we struggle with yearly because of ice. So, and I'm not familiar with all the subdivisions, so you can speak for Winchester.
Is that guy, I was not gonna use our equipment, so are you roads in them?
No, they can use the brush to clear. This is more like, I think, kind of no hill, or it gets real slick if there's buses and stuff. And I think the, the quote he's giving us, I think is to do all of the roads.
Well, then we're banning buses on the road if it's for more than six.
Or the wood. Um. I know that, I know that in law, like, we have an issue with that hill of God, but every year, we, and we're not able to put that stuff out, but, um. Pre-buy for two thousand, uh, pounds is, um, five ninety for one ton. He gave it to us, like I said, for all, so you could pre-buy one ton or we could pre-buy multiple tons, it's up to you guys. I don't know how much we would need for. He said for all our roads. Yeah, but we don't need it for every road, yeah, so that's the thing. So you guys think about it. If you, if you are reactive and you buy, it's a thousand eighty. If you're proactive and you buy it, it's eight hundred and ten dollars if it's available. If you buy in Bolton now, it's, pre-buy right now, it's one ton at five ninety. His option is purchasing the project, product in advance of the season, which he's doing for Ball Ground in Alaska. And then the snowplow, if they needed a snowplow, we had.
You don't go back, back. What's different about this year? Have we been buying anywhere in the past?
We haven't, but we haven't done anything. We literally just sucked it up and slid down the, slid, slid down the hill.
Clean the roads off in the winter, like, clean the Blue Ridge, I stayed right there next to my house. Their, only as soon as the snow hits, apparently.
We just, like I said, we have, I, we have a lot of, our, our roads, especially, you know, Laurel Way.
They got a good job to do throughout, it's like, uh, city workers.
Well, they keep it clean, the snow, they can't keep it clean with ice, that's the problem. And we literally just, we slide down those hills. I don't say you buy six tons of it, but I do, I, I would buy some for our, for our areas that are, that are like that. We don't necessarily have to use our snowplow. If we do that and we opt to use the snowplow, because it's really bad, it's a hundred twenty-five an hour. I think our machine can, can do what we need, which is brush it off. But we have nothing to apply ice. I mean, the, um, the salt for the ice, um, um, we, we can't pause.
So the question would be, if you go under contract with them and you buy a couple tons on the pre-buy, you've absolutely done that here. Do you still have that couple of tons next year?
Yes, you would just keep it.
Keep it, like, is he delivering it or what, does that work?
He, I'm assuming that he has a spot and he's, he's got a spot there at ICG. From what it looks like to me, when you drive, you drive while you, you see that he's got some bins and stuff in there, so.
I'd say if it comes to emergency, what we needed, we tried to rest on hope, I don't believe. I've been doing a good job keeping a clean ground.
Well, they, they do, but Lamar can attest, there's times we can't, I can't leave my subdivision. And that's any time that it snows and I says, I can't leave. If I leave and I hit that, and I hit that hill, I'm gonna slide. Well, I put it to you like this, Jim Unis lives across the street from people coming down that hill, um, on Laurel Way. Takes out his mailbox about six times, they check it out about six times in the last two. So every time it snows, they wipe his mailbox completely. Yeah, that's just the way the angle they come around there and hit it, so. Well, it is an issue, like I said, we have to just stop, so. I mean, at least if you bought a ton or two tons of it, you have it there. And if it snows, we don't need it. We just have it.
You're talking about two spots. At least what you're talking about.
I'm only talking about the ones that I know of.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know there's more in, inside the hall, I mean, inside here. There's some on Blue Ridge, there's, uh, Cherokee Avenue is another one, that hill coming down. Um, I don't, like I said, I don't think you need, yeah, there's a place on, I don't think you need six tons of it. But if you got a couple tons of it, I think that it's better to be safe than. But if you got a couple tons of it, I think that it's better to be safe and hard. I'd like to see it spread, especially in areas that have ice.
I, I hate to say this, but around, it's a little bit harder to step up. But I mean, you have to use it occasionally.
No, I mean, I'm not saying that we just, we pick and choose when they use it, so.
So what's the thing about salt town, is that covered?
If you pre-buy.
Installation?
Yeah, it said, I think it said, if, if you pre-buy, our pre-buy option is cheaper and or spreading it for you at that price, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm guessing that includes the, includes the spreading with the pre-buy. Otherwise, you, you pay, you pay the one, the, the ten eighty and the one to pre-buy?
Or you? That's just if you need a snowplow, which we don't. We don't need a snowplow.
But if you don't pre-buy, then you have to pay to spread it?
What's?
Or is that included in it? She was saying, it specifically says if you pre-buy includes the spreading, but it doesn't say if you don't pre-buy, what happens with the spreading?
True.
Maybe the ten eighty includes the spreading too, it's just more.
And then, like, so that's, it then, it's ready?
And, yeah, if it's available is the thing that, I mean, if we get, you know, we're here, we're not prepared.
It's just the sound.
So if everybody's out getting the stuff.
Milk and bread.
Milk, bread and salt. It could very, it could be not available, I would imagine.
I don't think having somebody under contract to do it if we need it. There have been times that I don't have the guys who have been able to keep up, and it's few of all the twenty around here, we're there to have somebody under contract. If we pre-buy, we need to have someone on hand, that's what will make sure that it's ours this year, next year, five.
So how much do you say that we pre-buy a two ton? I mean, I know we've got three, four areas that, that we possibly need it, but that's twelve hundred dollars initial, that's.
What does he use to spread it with, you guys spread it through?
He got, he got all, all new stuff, and he's contracted with, I believe it's Waleska and, um, Ball Ground and some other areas.
Does he spread it before, I assume, or does he?
When he got Ball Ground, they on first. Same number of factors on that run. Especially those runs, and they're about to spread it too, so I'm assuming a bunch of tons is spreading.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's so cold outside, but this, this is a great conversation.
It was.
I said, it's so cold outside, but this is a great conversation. And they say there's a contract PDF, so maybe there's like more, more bird information.
Yeah, it's in, yeah.
That's why I printed everything out, so there wasn't like any misinterpretation of what we think. I just texted him and asked about the pre-buy.
He's just, yeah, he's just pre-buying, and he's getting, because he can get it now, and he can get it for a good price, so. He's willing to store it, and then if we need it.
But if you buy like two tons, say there's a chance of snow coming, do you take it and spread it out of there?
Yeah.
And then it lies, now you waste it? Is that how it works? I don't know.
I think that's how that works.
They usually do the brown first, which I hope that's the, yes, now that, right?
Jacob, that's good.
The forecast, the forecast is that this winter, it's going to be colder, a little warmer than, than, than.
I see that, and the farmers, farmers all in heck. They actually said that.
So January, February is going to be tough?
I like Ring's idea of having the option, the contract, if, if we, if we need to use it. And I mean, it's, it's a, if, if we had to, it's a phone call and, you know, quickly, whatever is needed. The question would be is, how much should we buy?
You got a couple tons on hand, a couple tons would do a good, but not do.
Yeah, if it is really bad, they would run out, and we have to get more later, and we have to get more later. I mean, we just don't, you don't know. And do you know?
This guy probably keeps someone on hand too.
Any, any problem there is.
I really just buy it when I need it. So.
Well, that's fine, I mean, it's double price.
Well, it's, it's zero, if we don't save it though. Good math, man, has like two hundred twenty dollars higher if you buy, if you line him up, you get some before a storm. If you're in the middle of a storm, it's a thousand eight, or three rises. Pre-order, proactive and reactive. We have, so if they're forecasting, roads are going to be soft in high season, like two, or eighteen, if available, if he doesn't keep any product on hand, and he's only using his pre, pre-bots of, then he's making a business. Probably keeps himself on hand, that would be the chance you would take.
She said it would make salt water, not getting drip from mine.
Yes.
Call the camera and tell them, you need air out. It's just safety. Safety.
Well, I'm only using it on the Pickens County side, don't I?
We're part of the CCM, we're just doing that for a second.
I've, I've always been surprised to have to, to see workers get the roads going at a weird time of season. It definitely happens, it's not bad. I can't about know the other, like, subdivision, I'm sure it gets pretty nasty on that hill. Ours is, we got the far end out there just past the unit. That's opposite houses.
Brush, so you know you have two podcasts, one brush.
Yeah. I mean, the hill you live on here, the other one, blur is pretty steep right there behind us. Gets decent sun at a weird time or two, so I imagine it melts off pretty quick. Well, above my ass, it gets pretty bit of sun. And not blow it much. That's true.
You have that one as well, too.
We have it through the body.
That, that one has a lot of shade going out. For the kids, I don't know, it's straight.
Yeah.
But it's on that hill.
Yeah, we're mostly lucky out there, and never shimmers. Not exactly, it's light going out through there. I think it'd be the house at the end of the coal site.
I don't know what the options are as far as what happens if we don't use lots of it right now.
That's my biggest question, that I wouldn't be willing to pre-buy a couple tons as long as we know. We got to use it for the next four years, it's still.
You can still pre-buy.
Do you want to approve something pending his response? I've texted him, he just hasn't replied back to that. Or do you want to wait till the next?
I mean, he thinks.
Well, I don't, he's fixing it, but he's, he's fixing a purchase, he's got a purchase, so he has it on.
Six tons could do the whole city.
That's what he said.
That's what I'm saying.
We only need.
We have a couple of them, yes.
We only need a ton.
I'd start with two ton.
So can I get a motion to enter into a contract with ICG? What's that?
I'm sure.
I don't know, but it's what it is. Um, on an as-needed basis, and pre-buy two tons, and snowplow as needed.
If the pre-buy is available.
Yes, if the pre-buy, if the pre-buy continues to remain ours.
Depending on. Yes.
It would be ours? Until it's used?
Yes. Your motion? Chrissy, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John Oliver? Good job, John.
Yeah, I know.
All in favor? Okay, so just make a note that we want to make sure that we, the two ton, so sign on that one. And that we want to make sure that those two ton are made out if, if it's not used. It sounds like he's in for a long haul, he's got all the equipment, so.
Right.
The snowplow is on an as-needed basis, it's only twenty-five dollars a month. And I guess that, and we had that in the, that is nineteen ninety-seven, and our snowplow, our little snow broke, it's fucked. We can always hear another brush if we need to share. Won't you find out, so we have that? All righty, so just to prepare a little. Can I get a motion to?
That's that chair.
Yeah, that's right, John, that's your, your, we got this pretty hot into that. You have to make a notice right at the gate.
Okay, John Oliver, can I get a second? The two way, all night?
Well, you don't.
No.